I'd like to call this regularly scheduled Board of Ed meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Before the meeting starts, I'd like to read the following statement. Recently, the interim town manager is following the Governor's Executive Order 14A dated September 30th, 2021, whereas municipalities are authorized to institute mask mandates in indoor settings regardless of vaccination status through February 15th, 2022. Both the interim town manager and the town attorney conferred on this issue. We will no longer be following the after 5:00 PM optional mask mandate as was stated by the previous town leadership. It is important to state that executive orders have the same applicability as laws. There are no exemptions other than qualified and documented health exceptions. If you choose not to wear a mask, you may watch the meeting as a remote option. We will not begin the meeting until all Board of Ed members and attendees in attendance comply. We are complying. Ms. Cushman, the invocation a moment of silence.
Dr. Martin Luther King has been honored in our nation for decades. Through his powerful and revolutionary words and actions, he led the civil rights movement in the 1950s and 60s, addressing racial inequality through nonviolence. He tirelessly advocated for the passing of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, through which America made great strides in securing justice and equality for all citizens. Delivered at the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, DC, King's "I Have a Dream" speech is perhaps one of the most famous and inspiring in history. With the commemoration of his birthday next week, I thought I would honor his memory by reading one of his prayers to open our meeting. "O God, our heavenly Father, we come before thy presence this evening, thanking thee for many, for the many blessings of life. We come recognizing our dependence on thee. We also come, O God, with an awareness, the fact that we have not always given our lives to that which is high and noble. In the midst of all the high and noble aspects of justice, we followed injustice. We stand amid the forces of truth, and yet we deliberately lie. We stand amid the compelling urgency of the love of the Lord, as exemplified in the life of Jesus Christ, and yet we live our lives so often in the dungeons of hate. For all of these sins, O God, forgive. And in these days of emotional tension, when the problems of the world are gigantic in extent and chaotic in detail, give us penetrating vision, broad understanding, power of endurance and abiding faith, and save us from the paralysis of crippling fear. And, O God, we ask thee to help us work with renewed vigor for a warless world and for a brotherhood that transcends race or color. Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fire evacuation announcement? Verify our exits at the back of the room, to the side of the room, my left, your right. In the event of a fire, please exit out the back or these side doors down the stairs out to the parking lot. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Hamery?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Mr. Ungary?
Here.
Mrs. Acre?
Here.
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Madam Chair?
Here.
Board guests? We have no board guests this evening. Superintendent's report, Mr. Drazek.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item on the superintendent's report is a special recognition that unfortunately we didn't get until after our last meeting, but is actually for you from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And I'll read the letter that's sent to you. It came to our office that says, "Dear Ms. LeBlanc, please accept our congratulations for your 10 years of service on the Enfield Board of Education. You have shown great dedication and commitment to the education in your local community, and CAVE awards you with a pin to those who have served on boards of education for at least 10 years. Your pin is attached to the letter. Thank Kathy because she didn't lose it. Please wear this pin with pride that you are recognized for your accomplishment. Again, we congratulate you and thank you for your service to the children of the state. Sincerely yours, Elizabeth Brown and Robert Rader." If you bear with me for a moment, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to apologize to those who are watching in advance for the length of this update. But as you all know, this past week and a half has presented us with many challenges with reopening of our schools. So with those challenges have understandably come many questions and concerns. So I'd like to use my time to address these issues that have come to my attention the best I can. Let me start off with this. I do not want to close our schools, ever. Prior to COVID, I dreaded the winter. One, because I personally can't stand the cold or the snow. The two, because I never wanted to pull our kids out of school. However, as you all know by now, we have experienced a few cancellations, and I fully expect that there will be more to come. Except for the weather or a building issue like, you know, no heat or a broken pipe, the only reason that I would cancel school is due to a staffing shortage, either with Enfield Public Schools or our bus drivers. Now, I realize that many people in the community were unhappy that we were forced to close last Monday due to staffing, and I fully expect these same people will be unhappy the next time we have to close, and I can accept that. I realize people are tired, they're frustrated, and sometimes scared after what we've all been through these past two years. I am too. And I don't hold any malice towards those who express their frustrations. However, I do need to address a few of them. Now, I've stated this before, that I am not on any social media platforms. I consider that an occupational hazard for someone in my position. Yet, this doesn't stop people who are on these forums from sharing with me what others are saying. And through these platforms, and also people who have written me directly, there appears to be some chatter that our staff bear the responsibility for their recent absences. And in some cases, people have blamed school closures on staff, and I quote, "being too afraid to come to work and should be fired." So, I typically try to keep my personal opinions to myself, but this is one of those times where I feel an obligation to speak up. Anyone, Enfield Public School staff or a bus driver that didn't come to work this past week, it's because they had COVID or COVID symptoms. If they were symptomatic and informed us, it was me that kept them home. Imagine for a moment that a staff member reported symptoms to us and also reported being in close contact, but was simply unable to verify having COVID because a test result wasn't in, or they weren't able to secure a test, and I still allowed them to come to work. What would have happened if that staff member or the driver gets their result while they are at work? I'm going to tell you what will happen. The answer is, I would have allowed a positive person to come into school or a bus and expose every child they were working with, along with every staff member they came in contact with. This will be negligent on my part. I simply will not do that. And I wouldn't do that to a sick staff member. I wouldn't do that to any of our students. And I wouldn't do that to any of the family members of both, because that would be irresponsible. The truth is, our staff have done the right thing. They've had the virus, they're letting us know. If they have symptoms, they're doing the right thing and letting us know. Now, you're all aware of the testing shortage in this country right now, and if you want to be angry about that, I'll join you. I agree with you. Being two years into this pandemic and experiencing a lack of testing is incomprehensible right now, but I don't have any control over that. And more importantly, neither does our staff. We're not exempt from the problems the entire country is facing right now. We have staff members driving long distances to get tests, just so they can simply come back to work. Again, I understand the frustration of many, and I share some of these same frustrations. But to place blame on staff members or unions is not only untrue, it's shameful. I hope I never have to say this again, and I'm not trying to tell people how to think or how to feel, but the backlash against people who are trying to do the right thing needs to stop. Now, I realize I can't control what people say or do, but I can control what I do. So, from now on, I'm asking all of those who took this opportunity to place blame on staff members, knock it off. We're in the middle of a crisis, and it's time we all acted like adults instead of being warriors behind the protection of a keyboard. And I'm not doing this for applause. For those who can't control the urge to send me messages, please do. But please also, don't take this as being disrespectful, but don't expect a response anymore. I always try to keep up with response the best I can, but if it's going to be bashing people that's simply untrue, I'm just simply not going to respond. Please don't take it personally. This virus is surging right now, and everyone is doing their best to get our kids through it. Now, I also realize that the situation in Chicago is not helping matters at all. So let me say this clearly. I do not agree with what's happening in Chicago either. But what I do know is this, what is happening in Chicago could be happening in every town in America. Where is this not happening? Here, in Enfield. That's because when this started, our unions didn't reach out to me and demand that we go virtual. Instead, they reached out to me and asked what they could do to help. But the most important thing they did, they showed up to work. Even if they were anxious or nervous, even as long as they didn't have COVID, they came in. And for that, I couldn't be more thankful. And I also have to address the other elephant in the room. Apparently, there's a nationwide blackout planned for tomorrow, where all school staff will wear black and take selfies, to post online, to protest that we're still in school and in person. And I realize this may be yet another opportunity for some to take aims at unions. But before you do, just remember one thing. To participate in this blackout, you must do one thing, show up to work. So someone asked me my opinion about this yesterday, and I thought it'd be helpful for everyone to hear. I can care less what people wear to work and how many pictures they take of themselves with a black t-shirt on. And to be truthful, none of you should care either. The fact that they're coming to work and taking care of our kids is the only thing I care about, and we should all feel the same way about that, too. Look, none of us want to relive 2020. I certainly do not. But one memory I must share is that it wasn't that long ago that people were putting signs in their yards to thank a teacher, a nurse, or a school staff member. These are the same people. And I know you all at home are tired and worn down from all this, but remember, so are they. Everyone is. This is the hardest time in our history to work in education, and it's time we give these people a break. Now, I know teachers get a lot of the attention, rightfully so for everything they do, but we can't forget everyone that has sacrificed to get us through this. Our administrators, who I know haven't had a full night's sleep in two years, and I know that every decision they get is second-guessed, because I can relate to that. Our paraprofessionals, who come to work every day, not knowing what assignment they'll have because God knows how many staff members are out, but they do what they're asked anyway. Our clerical staff members, who often find themselves covering a class or a duty just to pitch in. These are the same people that are the first face you see when you go to a school or you call on the phone. And whatever stress they're dealing with, they're forced to put that aside so you, as a parent, are comfortable with the care your child is getting. Now, you guys know I can go on all day about nurses, but anyone who turns on a television knows the strain nurses are having around the country right now. Ours are not any exception to that. They're basically running triage units in schools for kids and for staff, often the ones delivering the news that a student needs to be picked up from school, and they still have to do it with a smile behind their mask. Our central office staff that volunteered to go out to schools to cover so that we didn't have to close, or some that volunteered to go pick up test kits and distribute test kits and masks so that we could stay open. And there's one group in particular that doesn't nearly get the credit they deserve. That's our cafeteria staff. Now, some may have forgotten this, but when this whole thing started and we were closed, our nutrition services staff never stopped working. They came to work every day to set up breakfast and lunch locations so that when kids were home, they can still have access to meals. And this is at a time when tests weren't short, but these things were. We didn't have masks to give them, but they still went outside every day and handed those kids their food. And now they come in every day, not for a paycheck, because they know that they are preparing and serving meals that could be the only meal one of our students gets that day. These are all the people that are keeping this place together, regardless of their fears about the virus. And it's time we all remember that and we thank them for it. So to all of our staff members, wear whatever the hell you want to wear to work tomorrow. I'm just thankful you're coming in. There's another reason that our schools are open right now, and I already know this isn't going to be popular, so I'm going to start with this disclaimer. I don't watch the national news. Unless you count the first 10 minutes of the Today Show, I'm really not interested in anyone's political opinions. Now, I say this because I didn't get this data from the news, the fake media, the CDC, or even the state of Connecticut. I'm not interested in any of that stuff. But at this point in time, the only thing I care about is what happens here, and the data I have is right out of our own town and our own schools. But I also realize that everything these days has a political lens on it, so I wanted to make that disclaimer. Schools are expected to be open because we do know one fact, that transmission in schools is extremely low. Now, how do I know this? No one told me. It's not because the state or the feds told me this. I know this because up until 11 days ago, we had to contact trace every case of COVID in our schools. The fact is, we just don't see transmission in schools the way we see it in the community. Where do we see transmissions? They're active in activities like sports, dance, scouts, et cetera. However, the biggest area we see transmission is in personal gatherings, like birthday parties and sleepovers. How do I know this? Because when we call with a positive case and ask a parent if any other students were exposed, parents tell us about a party or a sleepover or a soccer game. Again, let me be clear. I am not placing blame on anyone or any parent if a kid gets COVID at a sleepover. If I did, I'd be a hypocrite, because the last two years, my own kids have slept at a friend's house, or I've had kids sleep in my house. So I'm not placing blame anywhere. I'm simply stating the facts that I have here in town. An overwhelming majority of spread is happening outside of school and not in our buildings. Now, what I'm about to say, I know, is going to be misinterpreted as being sarcastic or rude. Please don't take it that way, as I'm not trying to offend anyone. However, for the past few months, I've sat here like all of you, and I've listened to audience members ask us to teach our kids to think critically, and I agree. The definition of critical thinking is the analysis of facts to form a judgment. And in this case, I believe the responsible thing to do is to think critically as to why we're not seeing the amount of spread in our schools like we are in the community. Given all the facts, there's only one conclusion I can come up with. And again, I know it's not going to be popular for some. But what's different in our schools from the rest of the community is that these things are required to be worn at all times, except during breaks and when students are eating. I realize some don't believe that masks work, and some of you have actually sent me your own medical opinions, and I appreciate it, but I'm not a doctor to read them. I'm not making a judgment on where you get your sources from. I don't care. I'm simply stating what I see here in our schools. And what I see is the transmission is low in our buildings, and everyone has to wear a mask. The masks work. Let me make it clear. I don't like wearing this thing either, okay? I wish our kids didn't have to wear them. But if this mask helps keep our kids in school, then I'm all for it. I also feel I should address some of the concerns brought to me about the safety of prolonged mask use. Again, I'm not a doctor. No pressure, Dr. Kalman. So for this bit of information, I had to ask the professionals. At the beginning of the year, when it appeared that masks would be required in schools again, I asked the State Department of Public Health and our local health director if there are any known illnesses to prolong mask use. The answer I received was this, "No, there are no known adverse health risks associated with prolonged mask use. There have been some reported cases of dermatitis." And I'll admit, I had to look up dermatitis as well. And for those that don't know what it is, it's acne. Let me say this for the record. I do not want any kids to get acne, okay? Remember, I have two teenage daughters at home. I understand how devastating that could be. But given a binary choice between acne or COVID, I have a responsibility to try to prevent COVID. Again, some may not agree, and that's okay. I respect your point of view, even if I disagree with it, but I owe it to everyone to be truthful. While I'm on the subject of masks, let me address this for the final time. We are under an executive order that requires masks in all pre-K through 12 public and private schools until February 15th. Once the order is lifted, I do not know whose decision it will be about masks in schools. It may be mine, or it may be the board's. But until then, let me be clear. There is no one in this room that can remove the mask mandate in schools unless you are willing to commit a crime. Knowingly and willingly ignoring an executive order is a crime. Nonetheless, doing it live on television. I've told board members this privately, and I will say it publicly now. I like all of you, but I'm not going to jail for you. And the same goes for the audience members as well. When the order is lifted, and if, and only if, the decision is left to local districts, then I'm open to anyone's suggestions. In the meantime, there is no reason to discuss this anymore until then. Now, I know what's coming next. Been sitting here a while. You should be fighting against this mandate. Now, for one, I should be fighting for the mandate if I don't agree with it, and judging by my earlier comments, you can probably figure out which way I'm leaning. But two, and more importantly, I think it's prudent to share my thoughts on mandates altogether. I don't like them. As a matter of fact, this evening, I was supposed to present my budget to the board for consideration. However, since most of my staff has COVID, I had to postpone that until next meeting. I mention that because every year in my budget presentation, I discuss unfunded mandates. Now, these are requirements by the federal or state government that we must adhere to, yet we receive no funding to support it. So basically, the government gets to order what they want, and Enfield will pick up the cap. And I've been advocating for years against unfunded mandates, and I'll continue to do so. As an example, an unfunded mandate that everyone may be familiar with is the Freedom of Information Act. As a public entity, if a member of the public requests certain information, we must turn it over. Now, there are many exceptions that I won't bore you with now, but the point is, if someone wants information and uses the FOI statute, we have to comply with it within reason per state law. The state doesn't reimburse me for the staff time, the resources to answer and fulfill the request, or in many cases, the legal costs associated with that request. We just have to do it. Now, before Facebook lights up, I am not saying I don't believe in the Freedom of Information Act or transparency. I'm simply using this as an example. But my point is this, if we're going to get rid of mandates, we get rid of all of them. You just can't pick and choose the ones we like and let the others stand. So that was a long way for me to get to the second point. I have fought against these. If former Chairman Kozel is watching this evening, hit the button so people watching on YouTube won't think I'm lying to them, because he was actually with me. I have gone to the Capitol to fight against mandates. As far as I know, I'm the only one in the room that's actually gone to stand up to those making these laws to make my disagreements known. So I find it difficult to sit here, week after week, and get lectured about not fighting for what I believe in, because as far as I can tell, no one has actually done that. That is, go to the place that actually makes the decision and not argue to the ones who were simply charged with carrying it out. Again, you may not agree, and that's okay, but sometimes the truth has to be said. The last item I need to address is remote days. Now, some have reached out asking if I can call remote days, and the simple truth is, I can't, by law or another mandate. Students are required to attend school 180 days per school year, and that school year must be completed no later than June 30th. Now, as it stands, that rule is not changing, which means any day missed because of staffing issues must be made up. Now, I've been asked, why can't we do remote days instead of snow days? The reason is, as long as these days have to be made up, staff are only contracted to work a certain number of days per year. If I ask staff to work on remote days that still need to be made up, we either have to bargain that, or we violate state labor laws. Again, laws we had no input into writing. Sound familiar? But I think we can all agree that none of us want our kids to return to remote learning, and I'll go on record saying, I don't want this for our kids. However, if given a choice between a snow day or a virtual day, it would have been my preference to go virtual for any day that we had to cancel, as long as it was temporary. And I say this for two reasons. One, if we are virtual, at a minimum, our staff would have contact with our kids instead of our kids freely doing whatever they want to do on a snow day. But two, and this is more important to me, if we're open remotely, I can still feed students that need meals during those days. On a regular snow day, I don't have staff to prepare meals, as contractually, those days need to be made up, so those staff members aren't here. The reality is, none of this really matters, since it's not permitted at this time. I thought I needed to clarify it, but like I said earlier, with things we don't control, I'm not going to continue talking about it. That's what the rule is. That's the way we have to operate. So what does this mean going forward? Before I explain that, I think it's important for everybody to know something about me. And it may seem weird, but just stick with me for a second. Has anyone ever had a reoccurring dream?
Yes.
Everybody's had one, right? Okay. I have as well. I used to play baseball most of my life, and every now and then, I have the same dream. I'm about to play in a baseball game, I'm on deck, and I realize I don't have any of my equipment. I don't have my cleats, I don't have a bat, I don't have a helmet. I then spend the next few minutes trying to put someone else's shoes on or grabbing somebody else's helmet, only to realize that I missed my at-bat and I'm never going to play baseball again, which is probably a good thing. You know, I'm sharing this not because I'm trying to become too personal and share too much with you, but so you can understand what we're all dealing with. Me, him, Kathy, everyone who works for us, we're planners. Every teacher in our district, they're type A. They're a planner. You need to be in order to do this job. We all like to have our ducks in a row. You guys have been on the board for a very short period of time. Has she missed anything to you, two weeks in advance? That's how she's wired, but that's how everyone's wired. That's just the experience you guys have had working with Kathy. We like to be able to plan, and we don't like surprises. The reality is, with all of this, we had a plan. We had more than one plan. I'll give you an example. Last Sunday, we had a plan, because we knew Sunday night at 10 o'clock, we were down a lot of drivers. And we had Plan B. But when a driver called out at 3:45 AM with COVID, we had to go to Plan C. We still had a Plan C. But when four more drivers called out at 5:30 in the morning, we were out of plans. And the reality is, sometimes we're just going to be out of plans. You know, I realize that everyone looks at schools, and we're supposed to have all of the answers. And we're typically our worst enemy, because we'll get things done when people don't think we can, or we lose funding, or something along. Our kids are still going to show up. We're going to deal. And that's a credit to our staff. But we are as stretched, as thin as we can possibly be right now. I'm just going to lay it all on the line. But we're going to continue to do everything we can to keep our doors open. I take no pleasure in saying this, but it is more likely than not that I'll have to close another school. And I made a commitment to the community that I'll give you as much notice as I can. But please understand that sometimes I simply can't. Case in point, last week at 5:50, we ran out of Plan C. In the meantime, I still have hope that the worst is behind us, so I'm asking everyone, please, hang in there a little bit longer so we can give our kids what they deserve. Last item is, we're closed for Martin Luther King Day on Monday. All schools and offices are closed. Man, thank you for the holiday, because I know people need it. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Drazek. Next is audiences. Thank you. One second. You must be an Enfield resident to participate in the audience portion of the meeting. We ask that you state your name and We ask that you state your name and address. Board members cannot respond back to you during this portion of the meeting. The board members can respond during their board member comments if they choose to do so. We also cannot respond to student or personnel matters. We strongly ask that you refrain from personalities. We also strongly ask that you refrain from yelling out during audiences or board members during their comments. We will allow three minutes for each audience member wishing to speak. There will be changes in our audience in the near future. Pat Flaherty?
I had a speech prepared, as sloppy as it is, but given everything that has happened since we showed up here today, clearly, there's a coup, as like half the Enfield Police Department is here in anticipation of us making a scene. Some of us chose to put a mask on. And for those at home, the theatrics of this going on now, is there is a building where you can't wear a mask, where you have, excuse me, where you have to wear a mask. There's a whole hallway on the other side of that door, full of people without masks on. There's police officers there, not allowing them to come in to write, to speak. So their First Amendment right is being violated. There's no, there's no arrests being made, no, they're just hanging out there. They just can't come through that door. The whole building's on mask lockdown, but you can't go through that door and speak. That's a violation of your First Amendment, first off. So I, woo, so screw this speech. I'm just going to just randomly talk, I guess, for my next three minutes. Imagine if we had as much minutes as some of you guys are allowed to talk. This is kind of like, beginning, or, excuse me, like, imagine like 1930s Germany. That's what, that's, that's what's going on. That's literally what's going on. So, I'll skip most of this, because it's irrelevant at this point. Just bear with me. I think the big problem is, we're just trying to get the point across that there is no emergency. I mean, there's nobody dropping dead in the road, in the road. The kids, as far as kids go, their survival rate is like almost 100%. Imagine if we went every year, everybody on social media saying, I got the flu, I got the flu, I got the flu. There'd be a pandemic of the flu. That's all this is. It's theatrics, it's theater, and it's been two years. The psychological damage of children being masked all day long at school is a problem. Nobody is seeing that. There is a lot of people seeing it, but they're being censored online, as I'm sure you can imagine. They're being written off as fake news, such and so on, so forth. I would like to know if anybody is aware that Governor Lamont is on his sixth or seventh extension of his executive powers. As long as he, as long as there is an emergency in Connecticut, there is testing, and there is masks, we'll take the masks out of the equation, there is testing needing to be done. Governor Lamont's wife, investment firm, somewhere in here, stands to benefit from it. It's, that was a quick three minutes, exactly. Exactly the point. I guess I'll end it there, and I will definitely be more prepared next time. Thank you.
This is a regular meeting of the Board of Ed, and we are here to conduct board business. They are wearing masks. We would like to conduct the meeting of the board in a professional manner. Is it Ryan Shutz? Thank you.
Ryan Shutz, 106 Church Street. Our rapidly moving, information-based society badly needs people who know how to find facts rather than memorize them, and who know how to cope with change in creative ways. Wendy Priznas, this is a letter from Cromwell Middle School that I emailed to all the members of the board. Dear CMC school families and staff, today CMS was notified that members of the school community tested positive for COVID. Although the district is no longer tracing, out of an overabundance of caution, you are being notified the following members have tested positive for COVID. Grade six, four present in school in the dates. Grade seven, two last present in the dates. Grade eight, four last present in the dates. At this time, your child is not required to quarantine. However, we ask that you monitor for COVID symptoms and keep your child home if they are ill. Enfield needs to reach out to these other districts and adopt their approach. The way Enfield does handle COVID goes against the Board of Ed mission statement. Two examples: Instill our students' curiosity and love for learning, which embraces the arts and the world around them. Improve student learning by holding staff accountable for providing the most effective learning environment and using the most effective teaching strategies. The system that is set up now to handle COVID in Enfield's school system is just flawed, to say the least. If a student comes in contact, they are forced to quarantine regardless of wearing their masks that are supposed to keep you safe from contracting COVID. So why continue to mask them? Enfield's system keeps kids muzzled, puts them at risk for other serious issues for masking. If close contact, the child is out of school and from learning. My nephew had to miss Christmas week due to a close contact, which is the best week of school for him and most kids. He looks forward to it all year. Mind you, he never got ill. Still missed all the Christmas fun his classmates got to enjoy, and he'll never get that back. How does this instill curiosity and love for learning, which embraces the arts and the world around them? Here's some numbers taken off ct.gov website. Numbers of confirmed cases in Connecticut, ages zero to nine, 46,477. Ages 10 through 19, 70,168. Out of those numbers, confirmed deaths, ages zero through nine, one. 10 through 19, four. Out of the five deaths, was it really COVID that killed him? Dr. Rachel Wollanowski, CDC Director, stated at least 75% of COVID deaths occurred with people with at least four comorbidities. Keeping these kids en masse and out of school is criminal. COVID continues to spread regardless of your vaccination status, or the piece of cloth on your face that causes more harm than anything else. And yet, I'm not saying unmask them all. If you still believe they work, by all means. Enough is enough, time to go back to the drawing board. Unmask our kids. Thank you.
Peter Genitis?
Just to comment real quickly on the superintendent's report or speech. The executive orders handed down by the state do not pertain to the public buildings. Meeting with you going down to Hartford, congratulations. I've met with my state senator and my state rep. There are over 20 people, or there were at one time, standing out there in a hallway, not coming in, choosing not to get $100 fine. As far as three minutes is concerned, I wish we had as much time to talk as the superintendent, or as much time as you people have to talk. I still stress again, getting back to what the town council does, they let the people speak, they take their criticism. I don't know what the hell's the matter with the Board of Ed. I don't know what you're afraid of, some common sense maybe. As far as negotiations, I would suggest that the board, I guess at the end of this summer, you're supposed to negotiate with the teachers' contract again. So if and when this so-called, and he's not even here to enjoy it, the COVID boogeyman peaks, why not close the schools down for a week? And then negotiate that, that can be made up in July. Tough sell, but makes sense if they really want to do something good for the kids. As far as virtual learning is concerned, virtual learning is not teaching, it's not learning. Virtual learning, for as long as it goes on, these kids will never be able to make up the stuff that they've missed. As for the mask mandates, that is in our public buildings, and that is something that has been given to our new town manager. It's her choice, and I don't know if there was any kickback from this board or the town council, but as far as the mandate by the town manager, as far as the four Republicans sitting on this board, I see there are eight people sitting here today, there's four of you, get up and walk out and call for a quorum. Thank you.
Amanda Marquez?
Amanda Marquez, 8 Hoover Lane. Our interim town manager has implemented a mask mandate for all the town meetings held in municipal buildings, even after 5:00 p.m. until February 15th. This measure has been put into place to slow the spread of the new COVID variant. But history and research have shown that masks do very little to slow the transmission of viruses. Cloth masks are made of common fabric and are highly permeable, and they become even more permeable with every wash cycle. A 2015 study of cloth masks concluded that particle filtration was extremely poor, at almost 0%. They were found to cause significant disease transmission and were highly discouraged in the use of infection prevention. The FDA explicitly states that under emergency use authorization, surgical or cloth masks cannot state or imply that they are intended for use as infection prevention or reduction. They must state that not because misuse may result in a lawsuit, but because these masks simply do not present the capabilities to prevent the spread of a virus, and to label them as such as false advertising. In 2019, the WHO conducted an analysis of numerous randomized control trials related to masking, and found that there is no evidence that masks reduce the spread of viruses in community settings. In 2011, the Journal of Influenza and Other Respiratory Viruses published a review of scientific evidence on the use of masks to prevent the transmission of influenza. It concluded that none of the studies they had reviewed established a conclusive relationship between mask use and protection against infection. The masks sold in stores for the general public to wear were nothing more than a feel-good measure. CNN medical analyst Leanna Wen stated on December 21st, "Cloth masks are a little more than facial decoration." She also stated, "The typical mask you buy in the drugstore is not really effective in keeping out the virus, which is small enough to pass through the material." How long will it be until they finally say that all masks are ineffective at stopping the spread, and nothing more than a proverbial Band-Aid on the problem? How many more ineffective mask mandates will we put into place before we stand together and say we have had enough? What will happen when the governor's tyrannical powers expire? What will the Board of Education's policy on masking in the schools be then? Our children be the last allowed to take their masks off because they cannot advocate for themselves. We, the people, have the power. United we stand, divided we fall. Holds true now more than ever. This town mask mandate is perfectly convenient for the board. It gives them a false sense of safety and silences those with opposing views at the same time. Throughout history, it has never been the good guys who have used the power of police to try and intimidate and silence opposition. Can the board answer why there is such a heavy police presence here tonight? What is different about this meeting versus any other meetings in the last six months? Dr. Martin Luther King gave us the quote, "One has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws, and I will continue to do just that." And for masks, there's a simple solution, and one that doesn't mean tossing out our individual civil liberties, and it goes like this: Those who choose to wear a mask can do so, and those who don't are not mandated against their free will.
Moving, I'm sorry, moving on to board member comments, my microphone was off. I'll be starting with Ms. Cushman.
These are all the letters, the credentials, that follow the name of Dr. Peter McCullough, who's a board-certified cardiologist, internist, and epidemiologist. With over 1,000 publications and over 600 citations in the National Library of Medicine, I would consider him an expert in the field of medicine. Since the outbreak of COVID-19, he has been outspoken about the availability of effective treatment and prevention of COVID-19, testifying before the Texas State Legislature and the United States Congress. Yet, he is being discredited, and he is being silenced. This begs the question, why? Why has nearly every mainstream platform removed his message? If effective treatment was and continues to be available, why was it not communicated so that thousands would not have needlessly died? Why is there a pandemic of fear in our nation? Why was the focus only on the development of a vaccine, rather than on these effective treatments? Why would the government and even pharmacies be allowed to interfere in a doctor-patient relationship, preventing the filling of prescriptions prescribed by the doctor for the prevention or treatment of COVID? The prescriptions in this case were not dangerous or experimental drugs, but rather medicines that have been safely used effectively for decades on people of all ages. In my family's case, why would I have to have prescriptions sent from pharmacies in New Jersey, Florida, and Texas, because my local pharmacy wouldn't or couldn't fill them? Dr. Ryan Cole, like Dr. McCullough, has risked everything to speak against the use of masks and the vaccine. Yet he too, like many others in the medical community, are being discredited and silenced. This leads me to question, why, with over 250,000 people adversely affected by the experimental COVID vaccine, with over 20,000 permanently disabled, and as of the past September, 15,937 dead from this vaccine? And this is according to CDC statistics. Why is this vaccine still available? Why is it still being mandated? Why are safety standards not being adhered to? If mask use is inconclusive, and according to many statistics, likely to be harmful, why are there mandates to force us to use them? Why would the FDA insist it needs 75 years to fully release all of the data examined when deciding to approve the Pfizer COVID vaccine? Our state and federal governments were established to preserve and protect the rights of every United States citizen. Yet why are they stripping away our rights with their mandates? As I read that prayer from Dr. King tonight, I just read, I just, that part stood out to me. Save us from the paralysis of crippling fear. I'm thankful for the members of our community, who have been coming faithfully to these Board of Education meetings since August, seeking to advance critical thinking by presenting us with information that's simply not being talked about in the mainstream. Information that is being largely ignored. May what they present stir up in us a curiosity, and even perhaps spur each of us on to answer a few why questions of our own. Thank you.
Ms. Akri, you said? Mr. Ungar?
I'm going to read a statement by Enfield resident Matt Schmidt, 1304 Bigelow Commons, who couldn't be here this evening, and asked that his statement be read for the record. And so I'm going to read it for the record. Good evening, Board of Education members. This is being read, and I thank whoever's reading it. It means that I have been expelled from the proceedings tonight.
Mr. Ungar, I'm going to ask you to stop, please.
Thank you.
We will not continue the meeting if the door keeps opening and is disrupting the process here.
Yeah, I had nothing to do with that.
Okay. But I'm just letting everybody in the room know, we'll be stopping the meeting.
It means that I've been expelled from the proceedings tonight for not wearing a mask. This is not the topic I wanted to touch on. I had other things to present. But it's important and evident at this point, when even the mainstream media is reporting on the ineffectiveness of masking in the wake of this latest wave of Omicron, enforcing a mask mandate is comically tragic. of this latest wave of Omicron, enforcing a mask mandate is comically tragic. So I've decided not to participate in what has become a go-to knee-jerk reaction to arise in cases, and for this decision, I've been penalized with dismissal. I've made a conscious effort to live in a world guided by reason, by love, and by respect. This is a world I have created around myself, and I will continue to come here in an attempt to speak, hopeful that my world will someday be welcomed by the harsh world which it seems many are living in right now. I remain open to all. I do not judge the decisions you make for yourself, but I will no longer succumb to irrational mandates, dictates, or decrees that pass judgment on the decisions I make for myself. I have been speaking before this board for over four months now, perhaps a pathetic case study in the practice of civil engagement. I believe my arguments, coherent and reasoned, have at least begun to open up minds in regard to these mandates. When I have been discussing with a friend last week the very real possibility of my expulsion tonight, they asked me if I had taken a hard stance, if taking a hard stance was the best option, considering that my past speeches seem to be having at least some influence. But if I have truly been effective, I believe my absence should be just as impactful as my attendance, and maybe even more so. My course of action then serves to test this notion. If my missing voice tonight does have a profound enough effect, then there is a chance at changing the decisions of this board, which have effectively denied the presence of those who wish to speak. If not, then my words have fallen on deaf ears anyway, in which case defiance is all I have left. Either way, the path is clear for me. I will continue to create the best world around me. I will continue to show up here to share the world I envision, and I will continue to force this board to own the decision of denying me. I do not plan to make it any easier on your conscience by acquiescing. I want to thank all who stand by me and want everyone to know, I will be back here for the next meeting proudly unmasked, and I will not give up. Thank you. Matt Schmidt."
Thank you, madam chairperson.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Ungar?
No, that's it. That's all I have.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Good evening. I have a few questions for the superintendent relating back to your report from earlier in the evening. Just some clarification on, is there or were there any plans to potentially, if we had another shortage to, of drivers or of that sorts? Was there any intention to maybe send some kids to school and maybe close one school over another to alleviate some of the transportation?
Closing individual schools is the, probably start this way. The only real impact district-wide for a closure would be because of transportation, because of our tiered bus turns. You know, one full-size bus will start at the high school, work its way to the middle school, then to the intermediate, then to the primary, and then, you know, Stowe in the middle there at some of their breaks if they can find the drivers. So a district-wide closure would be because of transportation issues. All other closures, I would, you know, is this stuff real wood? I don't know. Would really be envisioned more with one particular building, be based on the staffing of that building. And in the event that were to happen, we do have some staff that travel, although we've tried to eliminate that in the COVID world, we would be able to, you know, resurface some of those staff members to cover other buildings that were shortfalls in order to maybe not close more than one. But ultimately, if it's transportation, it's going to affect the entire district. If it's just significant staffing in a particular building, it would hopefully be isolated to that building.
Okay, thank you. Second question is in relation to the, as you stated, days have to be made up, and we've had a missed day already. There's a potential, knock on this fake wood, hopefully, hopefully not, but if that's the case, and if by happenstance they start to accumulate a little bit, would the potential there be to look at like they have done in past years with snow days when they accumulate to a certain degree of cutting short scheduled vacation times or potentially going to school on a professional development day of?
So that's the part I left out intentionally because I figured I was delivering enough things that weren't necessarily good things to hear in that long speech I promised I wasn't going to give anymore. But yeah, that's a realistic possibility. You know, coupled with, you know, the potential for closing schools because of staffing shortages, in addition to actual weather, you know, we have doubled the exposure this year, and unfortunately, we only, you know, going to school in July, as someone suggested, is not legally an option. We have to by law be done with school by June 30th. So we only have until June 30th to get that required 180 days in. So typically, in the event that there's an exorbitant amount of snow days, or weather, or in this case, staffing shortages, when we get to about April, we think we're kind of out of the clear for snow days. So then we can start examining how far into June we would go to complete the year, and if there just simply isn't enough days, then unfortunately, we would have to start eating into any of those planned breaks that we would have. Because we don't have full, many full, after April, we don't have any professional development days left, unfortunately, that means April vacation, and it's happened in the past. I think, you know, the reason I didn't bring it up, to be totally honest with you, is people have enough on their plates right now. You can see the level of frustration with whatever you think about this thing right now. It's evident in this room. Adding more frustration to people to say, hey, there's a chance that that vacation you finally planned two years ago and taking your kids to Disney World and probably prepaid, yeah, don't bet on it, probably not the best thing to start the new year off, so I held off on it, but I anticipated the question. So that is totally possible that that can happen. We will do what we can to avoid it for everyone, especially for our kids. Like, they look forward to those breaks. That's the one time in the second half of the year where they get an extended period, so we'll avoid it if we can, but ultimately, that would be a decision that, believe it or not, I don't make. You do, because it affects the calendar. So you guys would have to come back and make that decision, but we will present that to you in the event we have no choice. You won't have many options, like, there's only so many days, so it's not a huge decision, but I will, I'll bring it to you.
All right, thank you. And then hopefully, in the coming months, once this settles down, if we could, through Madam Chair, to the superintendent, at some point, maybe in the early spring, late spring, before we get out of school, just kind of get an update on where our student body stands growth-wise, academically, just kind of see some maybe visuals or graphs, given the school year closing out since we're, you know, pretty much halfway through at this point, but that can, that can be saved for a little bit down the road, given everything else going on, but at some point, I think that would be nice to, for the board to view, where we can see how we're doing, not only with mask-wearing and all this other crap going on right now, but academically, right? I mean, that's what the kids are in the school building for, so that would be great.
Mr. LeBlanc, I would love nothing more than to spend an entire meeting talking about academic and student growth. I cannot wait for the day that that takes place.
Ms. Pickett?
I am incredibly frustrated and disgusted that we are talking about vaccines, masks, COVID. I was elected to a Board of Education. I'm here to talk about how our kids are doing, how our staff are doing, and what we're doing to educate our kids. So I'm with you there, Mr. Superintendent, that I'd like to talk about education. I'd also like to thank Enfield Public School staff, community, families, bus drivers, everybody. It's been a tough start to the 2022 year, but I believe that if we stick together, stand united, and actually follow the mitigation strategies of COVID, we can be safe and we can keep our schools open. I'd like to thank our new town manager. Welcome. I appreciate all that's being done in our town as far as supporting us during this hard time. So if you haven't checked out the town website, there's vaccine clinics, there's warming centers, there's a lot going on to support our community, and I thank you for that leadership. I also, kind of to the COVID stuff, I do think it would be helpful to have some understanding because I understand contact tracing may not be happening, but kind of what's happening as far as our data at schools could be helpful, and that information. To John LeBlanc's point, I would love to understand where our students are. How are their academics? What's going on with wellness? What is attendance looking like? Our social-emotional learning, discipline? I'm worried about our kids, too, and I'd like to see how they're doing so we can support them in an academic setting rather than fighting about if they wear a mask or not, which I will no longer comment on that until February 15th, when we are allowed to make, possibly, who knows when that decision is being made, but I will no longer talk about masks in schools until that becomes a decision this board can make. I'm also hoping, I heard budget season is on its way, I'm hoping when we get that budget information that we can have a clear understanding of what is our P S R funds and what is our operating budget. I think it's really important to note that we are getting a lot of money, temporary money, and I think it's important for us to keep that in mind, that that is temporary money for two years, and we need to think about good, sustainable uses of that and how that money is being used to support our students, staff, and families. I also want to congratulate Altrissa Cox Blackwell in her new position as our Educational Equity Director, so I'm excited to hear more about that work that she's doing moving forward. And I want to, I guess a frustration of mine as well is, when we quote Martin Luther King Jr., if you followed his journey and his work, I suggest folks check out the kingcenter.org in honor of that holiday. He was about supporting a beloved community, where we actually care more about others than we care about ourselves. So right now, we are asking to be safe, which means wearing a mask, getting a vaccine, testing yourself, and staying home when you're sick. So I'm asking us in honor of truly thinking about what the man stood for as far as racial equity and a beloved community, that that's what we can do to stay safe. Thank you to our staff. Oh, gosh, and Scott would really kill me if I didn't give my school updates. Enfield Street School, there is a PTO meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. Progress reports will be coming out next week, I believe, the 14th, is that right? Sorry, looking at you quickly, but I believe that's right. Stowe, lots going on at their Stowe Early Learning Center. There is an FEO meeting on the 18th. There's a snow day flip grid. There's a pop-your-trunk-for-pre-K on February 17th. Sorry if I'm stealing your thunder, Dr. Kalman. Kite met last week. I wasn't prepared that you weren't going to be here, so. Kite met last week. They have also a lot going on. I encourage you to check out their website as far as webinars for families and things like that. So we are lucky to live in a community where folks care about us and are doing lots to support us, so please check out the town website, Kite's website, Enfield Public School website, PTO, Enfield PTO website for all the school updates, and that's all I have for tonight.
Dr. Kalman?
Thank you. What happened? Okay, well, I just like to start off by thanking our superintendent of school for a statement, a very eloquent statement, and I think it really needed to be stated. It was, to me, a breath of fresh air, really. All of us get our information from certain sources that we use, and as a physician with infectious disease training, at, I did a fellowship in infectious disease at Brown, my sources of information are from the CDC, not only the CDC, but also the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, the American Public Health Association, and the World Health Organization, all of which recommend the use of masks, based on a disciplined, reasoned, and rigorous evaluation of available data. Masks save lives. I'm convinced about that. Omicron has resulted in a massive number of children being admitted to Children's Hospital, including the Connecticut Children's Medical Center and Yale. We didn't see that with the Delta variant or the original COVID virus, and we all were lulled into this false sense of complacency, well, kids are protected from COVID. And now Omicron has demonstrated to us that kids can get sick, very, very sick, from COVID, and yet we still insist on being complacent. That complacency takes the form, thank you, that complacency takes the form of just assuming that because we haven't seen a lot of deaths among children, that we're never going to see them. If this virus is allowed to continue unabated, it's just a matter of time before we start seeing more malignant variants, more malignant mutants emerging, including viruses that may have a predilection to children. There's no reason in the world not to make that assumption, so it's all the more reason that we have to continue to wear, insist on wearing masks in school. If we let our guard down, it's just a matter of time before we see Omicron and perhaps other viruses swamping our school system, and many of those viruses may mutate into more malignant forms, so this is no time to let our guard down. We have to be very vigilant about wearing masks. So with that said, I just wanted to talk a little bit about Head Start and Kite. Head Start had no meeting this month because of the snow. However, I did want to emphasize that Head Start is fully enrolled. There are 102 eaglets enrolled in Head Start, which I think is a really great accomplishment. With respect to Kite, the Family Educator Organization is sponsoring an event that will be hosting the Connecticut Science Center, and this will be on, what is today's date? Today is the 11th. Okay, on the 18th. It's aimed at pre-K children and their families, and it's a great way of introducing kids to some of the basics of science, of the scientific method. I think what they're going to be talking about is invisible snowmen, and I'm kind of intrigued with that, and I'll have to find out exactly how they managed to do that. Participants will get free tickets to the Science Center, and there are two other Kite groups that I just want to mention that have in common the goal of parent engagement. Parent engagement for a functioning school system is really, really critical, and it's especially important in this day of COVID when parents don't have the usual opportunities to participate in school activities. So one is the Parent Leadership Academy, which helps parents to become more effective advocates for their children. A number of our board members have participated in the Parent Leadership Academy. The PLA teaches parents to run effective meetings, to plan projects, to network with community leaders, manage conflicts, and facilitate effective speaking. Workshops are held weekly for about 12 weeks, and they are limited to 15 participants so that each participant gets the attention that he or she deserves. And each workshop series involves a community service project wherein participants can practice the skills that they have learned. So it's a really, really good program that's been running for a number of years now. The other activity that promotes engagement is the Early Childhood Development Center. ECDC will identify five parents who are or have been participating in ECDC to join the Kite Collaborative. So this will give Kite an opportunity to tap into the expertise of the people who can most benefit from their services, which is parents and their children. These parents will serve as an advisory capacity, in an advisory capacity regarding school-ready initiatives affiliated with Kite. And I think that about sums it up.
Mr. Hamery?
Thank you. First off, thank you to Mr. Dreszek, Mr. Longy, Kathy, the entire Enfield Public Schools staff, the bus drivers, all of you that are out there doing what you have to do to make sure that our children do get the opportunity to get the best education possible by showing up. It's unfortunate the way that these days have gone by recently, and we've all done our best to adjust to a very difficult set of... our best to adjust to a very difficult set of circumstances. Thank you. And again, this is something that nobody asked for, nobody wanted, but it's the cards that were dealt. And we've been dealt with these cards, dealing with these cards the last close to two years. Now, I wouldn't want to wear the mask if I didn't have to, if I didn't think it made a difference. Yet, for the last 21 and a half months, I have, because it has proven to be effective in simple terms. I want to acknowledge the very eloquent and well-placed words of Amanda and Jerry here. They've said more than I can, in a way that I would not be able to. So I admire that ability. I want to offer my condolences to those families that were listed among those with children that died from COVID. I don't want ever to be in a position where we have the responsibility to determine if something so simple as a mask prevents one child from passing. I don't want that moment to come. I hope it doesn't. I have a hard time hearing a statistic thrown out that mentions a child passing away from a preventable disease and that being an acceptable number. To the time limits that we have up here, and we don't have a time limit up here because we are up here. I've been in this room for at least 10 years on that side of the table with the time limits that I've been given to work with and respectful of that timeframe. I don't always agree with the shortening of the timeframes or how that's been developed. But to get the ability to sit up here and talk without end, which I won't, it's because we went through the process of getting on the Board of Education. It's not something that's handed to us. It's not something that we were living the dream to be. It is something that we asked for and were given the responsibility of. So I encourage anybody else that's listening right now, if you want the unlimited timeframe, go through the process. It's not impossible. I'm here. So we're here, and we get to talk till we want to stop talking because of the position we're given, with, by the way, the support of the community. To the point of the things that Mr. Rider would like to hear about at JFK, I apologize in advance to the PTO at JFK. I will not be able to attend tomorrow night's PTO meeting. I was looking forward to it, but I have an alternative appointment that I've got to take, that has to take precedence, and I do apologize to that community. But as always, and as always will be, if there's any concerns, questions, thoughts that they have as a community, as an individual, as a family at the PTO, excuse me, at JFK, everyone is encouraged to send me a message. I'm available to hear those concerns, and I would look forward to those. Again, I apologize for not being able to attend. That's it for this time. Thank you.
Okay, that'll end with me. Just a couple of updates regarding Enfield High. We received communications from Ms. Clark regarding the midterm exams. The midterm exams as of now are January 27th through February 1st. Day one are periods 1A and 2A. Day two are 3A and 4A. Day three is 1B and 2B, and day four is 3B and 4B. If we, I'm sure Ms. Clark will be sending an update as we get closer to the time. I'm pretty sure these will be affected by snow days. So the other thing I wanted to mention is, we received communication from Ms. Clark, which I thought was exceptional, regarding support for our students regarding mental What she says in her email is, "We offer a variety of support at EHS, including our school counselors, social workers, and licensed therapists that are housed in our pupil services office throughout, through our partnership with Community Health Center. Additionally, we have a strong relationship with Enfield Youth Services, who can assist students and families with various needs." And I love that it says in "families," because sometimes when a student is struggling, that those struggles are coming from the family or the family is struggling as a result of. Each grade has a dean of students who can serve as a point person for students and parents needing additional support. Additionally, we can also set up student intervention team meetings for any struggling students." And then there's encouragement that says, "We want to remind you that it is critical that any immediate concerns be reported to school officials or the police department. Please do not rely on email for immediate safety concerns." And then she goes on to say, "If you or someone you know is in crisis and needs help, please call," and she lists the numbers in the crisis text line. And she encourages students to reach out to the support staff at Enfield High. I think this time of year is extremely important. Any time of year is extremely important for our youth, especially in our high school. And I'll be looking to see what we have in our younger grades. But I thought that this email was a very good indication of the steps they're taking at Enfield High to address youth mental health and make the students and the families feel The other thing I wanted to mention is, because Ms. Pickett brought up Ms. Cox Blackwell, Ms. Cox Blackwell is our new Director of Educational Equity. And I'd like to read that press release. Ms. Cox Blackwell is a dedicated Enfield Public Schools administrator, having served in several positions within the Enfield Public Schools, including the dean of students at Enfield High School, which she will be very missed, assistant principal of Enrico Fermi High, principal of Prudence Crandall, and principal of Hauserville Memorial. She also served for many years as a state Connecticut team mentor and cooperating teacher, a member of the CAS Connecticut Student Activities Conference Board of Control, and the CAS C I A C Track and Field Committee Member. Ms. Cox Blackwell participated in Kite's Racial Equity and Cultural Understanding Community Program, participated in several courageous conversations about race with Enfield High's faculty, and is an inaugural member of the Enfield High's Equity Team, formerly the Diversity Task Force. She has led professional development workshops on civil discourse, culturally responsive instruction, and addressing racial equity through courageous conversations. She is a current member and previous interim facilitator of Enfield High's Parent Equity Team, a past participant in a book club discussion on Courageous Conversations About Race by Glenn Singleton, and a contributing writer of the EHS Equity Statement of Purpose and the Joint Statement of Support by the Enfield Board of Ed and Enfield Public Schools in response to the murder of George Floyd. Ms. Cox Blackwell earned a six-year diploma in educational leadership and administration from the University of Connecticut-Storrs, where she was a Danforth Scholar and a Master of Science degree in educational administration and supervision from Central Connecticut State University. Prior to these graduate programs, she earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in child development and a pre-K through eight Connecticut teaching certification from Connecticut College in New London. When not working in Enfield, Ms. Cox Blackwell enjoys volunteering at her church, spending time with her family, especially her granddaughter, and reading various general books. So I'm going to take a moment to congratulate Ms. Cox Blackwell on this recent appointment. I can't wait to see, as we take our equity and diversity efforts forward in this district, how you can lead us in those. Lastly, just a few comments for what happened this evening. I am only responsible for what's happening in this room during our Enfield Board of Education meetings. I can't be responsible about what's going on in there and the noise. This is what I care about, is conducting these meetings at the Enfield Board of Education, because we're all here for the kids. Most of us are here for the kids. We want to conduct these meetings in a professional, in a kind manner. We should be acting the way we would be expecting our kids to act, in school, at home, wherever you bring your kids, and you have an expectation of their behavior. With that being said, I have stated in the past many times how I felt about the mask mandate, how I feel about masks, how I feel about COVID. I have a daughter in nursing, who is at the hospital right now. They are doubling up COVID patients in rooms right now. She works on a floor in cardiology, and they are receiving patients that aren't even cardiac patients because they are running out of beds. I've stated this before. What I want to say is this. These Board of Education meetings need to refocus and be focused on what is happening in our schools, with education, with extracurricular, what needs to be improved, and what should be championed. And I challenge my board members to actually come here next meeting with an update regarding a school function that they attended, or communication that they have had with an Enfield Public School liaison, whether it's a PTO meeting, anything like that. Because we come up here and we fuel a fire. I'm here to represent 5,500 kids. I'm here to represent students and staff, all staff. And I've said that before, from cafeteria workers, who are saints, by the way, who, like Mr. Dreszek said, did a lot of work when we were remote learning and made sure the kids in Enfield got fed, to our administration and everybody in between. Suppose every day you left work, and you came home, and you wanted to open up social media to unwind, and somebody was criticizing your work and what you did day in and day out without really having the knowledge that wears on a person, that would wear on me, that is wearing on the Enfield Public School staff. But they show up, and they smile, and they take care of the kids. And when the teachers can't come to work, they're upset. And when the teachers were talking about the hybrid learning last year, it wasn't because they wanted to stay hybrid. They wanted to be the best versions of themselves that they could be, and they felt like they couldn't do it. They have said, they didn't go into this for money. So I'm challenging all of us to refocus and start reaching across the aisle and working together and decide what we want to focus on as a Board of Education.
Say it again.
Because I'm tired, and we owe it, as the leaders of this school district, to come together in a way that we can all work together. We have to figure it out for the students, for our staff, and for the community.
And how do we stand?
That's it. Oh, one more thing. Thank you to Tessa, who made this for me, because this puts things into perspective, right? She is a student at Stowe. She's an eaglet. The next item on the agenda is new business BOE policy revisions, the first reading. And I believe, Mr. Hamery, you're going to be filling in for Scott.
I can grab this if you want.
Sure, thank you, Andy.
Yeah.
I absolutely do. Thank you.
So we have, the Policy Committee's been working hard the past few months. So there are 13 total policies in your packet for you to look over. The public, they're also on our website. That's the process. Once the Policy Committee reviews policies, and these are through, CAEB is an organization we use that gives us sample policies. Some are new, some are existing policies. And you will see in your packets, board members, that if it's language that will be stricken, there's a line through it. If it's added, it'll be noted that way. So take a look at that. There's two readings. And for the public who's watching, you also can see the 13 that are on there. You are invited to be a part of that as well. And you would contact the policy members that are on the website if you have any input. We'll be meeting again to look at the next round of policies. We have about seven more that we need to look at to get to you. So you're going to be busy looking at policies. That is one of your main functions, as Ms. LeVank was talking about, refocusing ourselves. This is a good place to start. Policies are certainly a place to do that. So please look those over. You'll be doing a vote next time on the reading of this. First reading first, and then second reading will be next week.
Do I have a motion to accept the first reading?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pickett, second. Second by Mr. Kalman. Discussion?
Yes.
Sure. Yep, absolutely.
I just wanted to say, since when I was reading over the policy adoptions and revisions, I did like, and I supported very strongly, the philosophy of the Enfield Public Schools. So there were several statements that I strongly agreed with and that I supported. Like, for example, I liked when it said that Enfield Public Schools was, it was important of having the students master basic skills essential to functioning in society, skills such as reading and writing, listening and speaking proficiently. All right? That's very important for students as they grow, okay, become adults, and they should be able to express themselves in an intellectual manner. I thought it was important, and I agreed when it said also the philosophy of having a strong base of knowledge in mathematics, in the sciences, technology, and especially in technology because of our changing society, and that having programs in our school system that meet the intellectual needs, no matter the level of learning of our students. I also like the statement that Enfield Public Schools enables students to apply all of this knowledge, their problem-solving techniques, and that they encourage creativity and independent thought, doing research projects in their daily class lessons. I'm also happy to see the integration of the arts in our school system, art, music, for the health and wellness, physical education programs, and then extracurricular activities, like sporting things after school. So I just wanted to comment that I liked seeing that philosophy in our school system. I think it's important to maintain a healthy school system, being a teacher of 40 years. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for pointing that out and looking into that. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other discussion or questions? Ms. Cushman?
Could I just ask a question?
Oh, Ms. Cushman, and then I'll come to you. No, 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 no problem.
One of the things that I had mentioned at the policy meeting, and I'll take the time just to reiterate for the rest of the board, referring to policies, the 0200 and the 4131, both of those policies are revisions, and they both have an SEL component that is now being required. And it specifically says on the policy, "Principles and Practices of Social Emotional Learning," or SEL, SEL. It's now being required to be integrated into our district's professional development plan. But as of yet, we don't really have a clear definition of what these principles and practices are. And one of the things that I shared at the meeting, I said, "As one might expect, social and emotional learning, SEL, has commonly referred to a process through which students acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions." And I think we all can agree that these are important skills for us all to have. Unfortunately, in a very politicized climate, SEL has expanded to also seek to effectively address issues such as power, privilege, prejudice, discrimination, social justice. And such efforts are often inconsistent with or violate existing local, state, and national laws, such as the Equal Protection Act of the 14th Amendment. SEL has become a race-based philosophy promoted by the Collaboration for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, which is also known as CASL. In December of 2020, the president and CEO of CASL, Karen Naimi, I'm not sure how to say her name, she announced that CASL has revised its definition of and framework for social emotional learning to highlight the value of SEL as a weapon for social justice. The idea of SEL being used as a weapon of social justice carries a connotation of political activism. And by today's understanding, social justice focuses on one segment of the population, disregarding the interests of others. It turns out that necessarily this involves treating people unequally, violating the Equal Amendment Clause. In June of 2020, there was a webinar that was entitled, "SEL as a Lever for Equity and Social Justice." And CASL CEO, Naimi, and her two colleagues stated that SEL- And CASL CEO, Naimi, and her two colleagues stated that SEL should be used to elevate favored students, based primarily on race, over disfavored students. This clearly seems to be discrimination. In this vein, Naimi declared that social emotional learning must actively contribute to anti-racism. "We see SEL as a tool for anti-racism," she says. But what is anti-racism? From what I've read, a person who makes the claim of being anti-racist is not equivalent to one who says, "I'm not racist." Not racist does not equal anti-racist. Ibram X. Kendi, a well-known diversity, equity, and inclusion program trainer, defines anti-racism this way. "If racial discrimination is defined as treating, considering, or making a distinction in favor or against an individual based on that person's race, then racial discrimination is not inherently racist. The defining question is whether discrimination is creating equity or inequity. If discrimination is creating equity, then it's anti-racist." As Kendi says in this quote, "Discrimination that creates equity is the definition of anti-racism." And in this view, discrimination and anti-racism go hand in hand. Yet in 1989, the Supreme Court stated that the guarantee of equal protection cannot mean one thing when applied to one individual and something else when applied to a person of another color. The SEL component added to these policies, 4131 and 0200, are mandated by law. But the principles and practices are not yet defined. While CASL is the leading developer and distributor of the SEL curriculum, I do not believe that we are required to adopt their materials, nor would I suggest we ever do so. Until the principles and practices of SEL are clearly defined, I do not recommend passing
Dr. Callen?
One very quick comment, really a question. Andy, there was a policy relating to lactation rooms. And it's a great policy. My only concern is, do we have, that related to staff, do we have a similar policy relating to breastfeeding students?
The policy received from CAAB was under personnel, so right now it's just under personnel. Obviously, policy aside, any school in this district would obviously care for any student for any need they had like that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they have the same.
The policy you have in front of you is under personnel, so it is speaking specifically for staff.
Okay.
Ms. Pickett?
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. One is that CASL is an organization that leads a framework for social emotional learning. It is not a curriculum or something that we could purchase. And actually, there's work that our schools are already doing in this area that I think is incredibly important as far as reaching our mission of our schools and setting our kids up to be college career-ready and actually citizens in our society. The other thing is coding SEL as a weapon of social justice. A, I don't know what a weapon of social justice is. I think social justice is something that we stand for as far as creating an equitable society where everybody is welcomed, included, and heard. So if SEL will do that, let's do it. So I am in favor of this work. I know it's work that our district has committed to before and is in part of our mission and work. And I trust our leadership to do this in a way where students feel welcome, heard, and included in conversations and accepted in the work.
Mr. Hamery?
I just want to reiterate something I said in the past, that in this position, I know my place in the organization. I am a member of the Board of Education, a member of a group of nine individuals that have a responsibility to govern the Enfield Public School system. We have one employee, that's it. Our position is to make sure that that one employee does the work that is outlined in the mission objective, mission statement, and objectives of the Board of Ed. Ours is not to look over the shoulders of our educators and wonder if they're doing the right thing. We have a level of trust within our administrators and by them, into the frontline educators of our children. So in that, I understand that my role is to make sure that we are meeting the mission statements and objectives of our policies and that the policies will be formed in such a way that they allow the students to achieve the goals and take the most out of their school's careers. So I just wanted to reiterate that statement. I know my place in this organization, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone? Mr. Ungeyer?
I want to address a little bit, I think, what Janet was saying earlier. Janet, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong here in any way, but I served on the Policy Committee during the last term here. And I remember going over this particular policy, and I remember specifically, I thought it was interesting that Janet picked up on exactly the same point that I had made in a meeting that we had. And it says here, and it was the same policy, same number, it said, "to integrate the principles and practices." Okay? And then I said, okay, well, and I asked Andy, Longy, I said, "Andy, what are these principles and practices?" I'm happy to integrate principles and practices, but tell me what they are. I heard someone say, Board Member Amanda here say, "Well, you know, that's, you know, welcome and included and whatever." But if they defined it as that, I would say, yeah, that's fine. If they said, yeah, the principles and practices are that all students are welcome and included and this and that, I'd say, okay, good. I'm glad that our students are welcome, included. But when they say, okay, you have to integrate the principles and practices of SEL, and then you ask, well, what are the principles and practices? Then they go, well, we don't know yet. They're really not defined yet. So how can we responsibly integrate principles and practices when we really don't know what those principles and practices are? And I think, I think that's the point that Janet's making. I think that's the point that I'm making here now. Secondly, apart from that, I had a separate question in that I was privileged, not long ago recently, to attend a CAAB Board of Education workshop. And in that, we were able to speak with other Board members from all across the state. And we were talking about policies, policy in general. And we receive our policies from CAAB. They provide us with these policies. Some of them are state-mandated policies, other ones are optional policies. And then we go through them and choose which ones we want to incorporate of those optional ones anyways. The required ones, we have to incorporate because they're backed by state law. But many of the people I spoke with said, oh, yeah, yeah, you get your policies from CAAB, but there's also policies that are available from Shipman, too. Shipman provides policies. And these are, could be worded differently, presented differently. So have we looked at, I have a question for Andy, have we looked, for Assistant Superintendent Longy, have we looked at other policies from other organizations like Shipman as alternatives to CAAB's proposed policies?
I'll jump in before Andy does. Shipman is also CAAB lawyer, as well as ours. So, yeah. Shipman is actually, that workshop that you went to was sponsored by Shipman. So that's a shorter, I wasn't at the policy meeting, so.
No, but my understanding was that the policies are not identical, okay? That there are differences between the policies. They're worded differently. Some presented by CAAB, others presented by Shipman. I just think it might be nice to have both to look at and to review, and we may be able to select one that's probably most beneficial to our system.
You got to pay for both of them, and we already paid for CAAB. And that was a decision that this Board made a number of years ago to transition the policy series. We were with Shipman at Good at One point, but Shipman and Good at One are attorneys. So a lot of the policies were more keeping in line with state requirements and state laws, whereas CAAB is an educational organization, they get more in-depth with things that are actually happening in the classroom that may not necessarily just be associated with law. If the Board wants us to explore Shipman policies, be known that there's already a charge.
Okay.
Ms. Cushman, I just have a question. I didn't catch the policy numbers. You said 4131 and 0002?
0200.
And your comments are based on the changes that were made that are requested to be made or just in the policy in general?
The changes, like the SEL component that's being defined.
Okay.
There's just not a lot of clarity in what, as John said, what the principles and practices are. And when I just looked into what the different, what the SEL is, you know, what social emotional learning, how it's defined, the influence of other, you know, of CASL on the social emotional learning.
That's okay.
It just was not something that seemed like we ought to be pursuing.
Okay.
Can you identify something about that that we wouldn't want to pursue? Is there something in that specifically that we don't want to implement?
If SEL's CEO and president is saying that SEL is a lever, they see SEL as a lever for equity and social justice, or that, I'm sorry, that was the title of the webinar, when they say that SEL should be used to elevate favored students based primarily on race over disfavored students, or when they say, "we see SEL as a tool for anti-racism."
Okay, I'm sorry, what is? I apologize for what may seem like an ignorant question, but what is the tools for anti-racism? I believe Amanda asked what those were, and I got to second that question. I'm not quite sure what specific tools of anti-racism would be that you could identify in what you're reading there. And if there is a tool for anti-racism, I mean, I'm struggling to find a negative to that. I mean, what, I'm really struggling with that.
Okay.
I think, I guess what I was trying to clarify from Ms. Cushman, that she didn't, during this policy discussion, that she doesn't, she's not comfortable with what she's reading in this policy. However, you know that they are state-mandated, but you just wanted to clarify how you were feeling about the specific areas of the policy.
Well, do we have, when it talks about the principles and practices, do we have some flexibility of how we, as a district, can define the principles and practices? Do we have to incorporate anti-racism? I mean, it would seem like, to me, before I started reading, I thought anti-racism kind of meant not being racist. But that's not what it means at all, according to, you know, someone who's a well-known person, you know, in speaking on this topic. You know, when he defines anti-racism as if discrimination is creating equity or inequity, then that discrimination, if it's creating equity, then that's anti-racist. So he's saying discrimination that's creating equity is okay. That's like, he's saying discrimination is okay.
We have policies against discrimination, so I think, like, that's covered in a different
Kathy, do I have to make a motion to close discussions, or can I just take a roll call vote?
Yes, someone can do that.
Okay. Okay. So I just wanted to clarify what you were asking and that you were looking for a clarification if the district has any say in. Mr. Longy? Regarding Ms. Cushman's question regarding the district's flexibility with the SEL?
To me, the way I read it, it gives districts a lot of flexibility. I don't know the program you're speaking of. I mean, social emotional to Enfield Public Schools is different by level. It's much more of a, it's welcoming programs, it's behavioral programs, how to stand in line, wash your hands, be kind to each other, filling jars with positive little balls, and when it fills up, the class gets a pizza bar, you know, whatever. Whatever their, each little group is, very different from the high school to Stowe. So we do not have one program for social emotional learning. It's grade-based, it's much more fluid. We don't buy anything. I think it's being looked into a little bit too much as a group, but this, again, this is not my job. Your job is to vote on this, but I'm just telling you from being in a building as a principal, it's, I think it's not as rigid as what you're looking into here.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Can I just? I just, I know, like, from the newsletters that I've seen online, that the Stowe Early Learning Center sends out, you know, they have great little videos for the kids with the Sesame Street characters, with an adult, and they're talking about emotions, and they're, you know, identifying the emotions, what makes them feel like that. And that is very appropriate, and that's what we would expect social emotional learning to be. But that's at a preschool level. So I'm just questioning, what does it look like when we get to the high school? Does it take on a more activist kind of attitude in a, you know, like, when we see the social justice warrior kind of connotation?
Okay, we're going to end with Ms. Pickett?
Perfect. I just want to clarify that there are SEL standards from the State Department of Ed, so there are ones developed for pre-K and K through three, and there will be four through 12 released. That's public information. And my guess is that our SEL curriculum is aligned to the standards that are put forth by the state. So it will be clear as far as what those skills are by grade band, and you can access those at the state website.
Kathy, roll call?
Can we clarify what we're doing here?
Voting on?
Just first reading.
First reading. Just the first reading.
Okay. So given that we have a second reading, yes.
Mr. Hamery?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Four.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is BOE policy adoptions, the first reading. Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes, so also in your packet, in the same vein, these are the next round of policies that you have. The first grouping was actually, as Mr. Ungeyer said, that was two different groups that looked at those policies. The next group you're looking at is from the current Policy Committee that sent these forward. And again, those are in your packets as well. We may have talked about both groupings, so I apologize if that's the case, but you can see the numbers that we're looking at now. It's the second group of numbers.
Do I have a motion to accept the first reading of the policy adoptions? Motion by Mr. Hamery, seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. No discussions. Kathy, roll call?
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamery?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Board Committee Reports, Curriculum Committee. Ms. Pickett?
There's no update since the last meeting, but we are meeting again on January 20.
Thank you. Finance, Dr. Callen?
We, I think the primary discussion at the Finance Committee a couple of days ago was the SINKOVITZ Endowment, known as TAG, Talented and Gifted Students Program. There was a presentation of the endowment status that was given by Randy Savatsky of Wolf Financial, the investment company responsible for the administration of the endowment. And it's going well. The initial investment was $2.75 million in 2012, and it has since grown to almost $3.5 million, an annual return of about 8%. This kind of investment should yield at least a 5% to 6% return, so we're in pretty good shape. Thus far, we have Thus far, we have been fairly conservative in the use of the endowment funds. Since the TAG program began, we never really spent more than $100,000 per year. Randy has informed us that we have approximately $750,000 in interest, so that we would be able to spend substantially more without dipping into our principal. As we discussed at our last board meeting, this might be a good time to reevaluate and perhaps expand the TAG program, and a good place to start, Amanda, would be a discussion with the Curriculum Committee. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman. The Policy Committee, I think you're just going to, yep, Mr. Hamery?
No meeting since the last one where we went over these policies we've just had the readings of. Next board, next policy meeting is going to be next Tuesday, the 18th.
Leadership Committee, we are going to start meeting on a monthly basis. We had to reschedule last meeting, so I'm hoping to be before our next Board of Ed meeting. Joint Facilities, we have a meeting, our first meeting of the new group, on Thursday. Let's say the 11th until 13th, January 13th. JFK Building Committee? Do we have an update on that? That's Scott, he is not here today. I think Joint Security is also Scott. Joint Insurance, that's me and Ms. Akri, and I don't believe we have a meeting until March, but if you want to have a conversation between now and then, and I can fill you in on what we do there, I'd be happy to do that with you. And then the Youth, Mental Health, and Wellness Advisory Committee?
No report.
No report. Okay. Moving on to Item 13, Approval of Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the Special Board of Ed Meeting Minutes from November 23, 2021?
Moved.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Hamery. Show of hands? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the regular Board of Ed Meeting Minutes from November 23, 2021? Motion by Mr. Hamery, seconded by Mr. Ungeyer. Show of hands? Okay, Special Board of Ed Meeting Minutes, do I have a motion to accept the Special Board of Ed Meeting Minutes from December 14, 2021?
All moved.
Motion by Mr. Kalman, seconded by Mr. Ungeyer. Show of hands? Okay, and then lastly, do I have a motion to accept the regular Board of Ed Meeting Minutes, December 14, 2021?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Hamery. Show of hands?
Josh.
Yep.
Item 14, Approval of Accounts and Payroll for the month of December and November 2021. Dr. Kalman?
Okay, so the Finance Committee met on January 10, 2022, to review financial statements for grants during the month of November and December. Is that me?
Yes.
Year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board, so the motion, I move we accept the superintendent certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the months of November and December, the total grant and head start expenditures amount to, November, $669,651.16, December, $859,709.60, broken down between payroll totaling, November, $488,536.3, and December, $789,855.95. And other accounting accounts totaling, November, $181,115.13, and December, $69,853.65. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented. Certified Lorraine Sizneros approved Christopher Jeszek, Superintendent.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hamery. All in favor? I don't believe there are any line item transfers either. Next item is number 15, Correspondence and Communication.
There is no.
There's nothing to report. Do we have a need for executive session?
No.
Okay, and I'd like a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Moved by Mr. Hamery, seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. The meeting is adjourned.